Well, good morning, everyone. I will now call to order the September 4th, 2025 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. County Administrator Gary Schmidt, would you call the roll for us?
Yes, thank you, Chair. First staff support today, Clerk to the Board Andrew Giraki, County Council, interim County Council Billy Williams. Roll call, Commissioner Savis.
President.
Commissioner Helm.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Chair Roberts. Here. All right. Thank you, Gary. Please stand, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now I will open the meeting for public communication. Testimony is limited to three minutes per person, and I always ask that comments be respectful and courteous. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as a part of the public record. It will take in-person testimony first, and I ask our clerk if he would moderate the in-person and virtual testimony for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have received one blue card for someone who wishes to speak in person today. This is a reminder that if you are attending this meeting in person and wish to comment, to please fill out a blue card that can be found on the table by the center doors, deposit it in the box, and I will call on you in the order that they are received. First, Lori Kimmel. Lori Kimmel, please come forward, introduce yourself, you'll have three minutes.
My name is Lori Kimmel. I am Chair of the Veterans Advisory Committee, and I'm here to introduce myself. We are almost at full capacity, but I would invite the commissioners to come to our meeting. It's open, and I also have put on the agenda a spot for the commissioners to speak if they wish to address the committee, but I'm just here to introduce myself. And we're hit the road growing, running. We still have one opening, but we're almost to full capacity, but I would invite the commissioners to come and come to our meetings. We meet the fourth Thursday every other month. Our next meeting will be the fourth Thursday in October, and we do have executive meetings that are on the first Wednesday of the month, and we meet at 9:30 in this building. Is there any questions for me?
No, I know we have a couple of comments, and I can just attest that I know each one of the commissioners is very passionate about this issue, and I would like to have a work with staff and maybe rotate to make sure that we're kind of coming at different times so that we can do just what you ask. So I have, Commissioner Schrader has a comment, I know has been an advocate on this.
Yeah, thanks for coming in today. I really appreciate your coming to touch bases with us. There are a few things that I know Ben and I have been talking about as well, and kind of revitalizing our relationship with Camp Wuthicum, because they're kind of our presence here with that, so we've been working on that. And I haven't talked to the rest of my colleagues yet, so no surprises here, but the National Association of Counties has a program called Green Lights for Veterans, and we, what they do is they work with Amazon, has helped sponsor it, and they get people green light bulbs. So the month of November, and Veterans Day in particular, it becomes a countywide activity. So I don't know whether or not we can implement something like that, but that was something that was in the queue as well, and I would love to come. I serve on the Veterans Committee at the National Association too, so I might be able to bring you some information about what they've been up to.
I look forward to meeting with you guys, well, the Executive Committee looks forward to meeting with you guys when we put our yearly plan together.
Okay.
I'm not sure of the timetable with the commissioners. I can leave my business card, and you can contact me, but we look forward to putting out our yearly plan.
Great.
And we have got a monument committee going, and through Representative Drezen, we got a House resolution to put signage for 18 combat, who did 18 of Clackamas County boys that didn't come back from Vietnam, honoring them. It got through the House, we got a standing ovation, and
That's great.
Got through the Senate. So we're looking forward to seeing those signs up of our Clackamas County veterans, combat veterans that didn't come back. And we also just established a mental health committee to focus on veteran suicide.
That's wonderful. Can I ask what branch of the service did you serve in?
I'm a retired Master Sergeant, that's an E-7, out of the Air Force. I was at the 142nd, the 116th Air Control Squadron, and 9/11, we were put on the road, and we were the umbrella over the Northwest, because the terrorists turned off the transponders of the passenger jets, and civilian radar did not pick them up when they turned the transponders, military radar did. We reported to WODs, Western Air Defense up at McCord, and also to Con Air in Florida. So also, I was at the 173rd, and I was the base Chief of Information. I did not hold the rank of chief, but it was Chief of Information, which went with Records Management, Privacy Act, Record Storage and Retrieval, which is important for our veterans, so that they will get, if they don't have those orders, a lot of times they can't prove that they were in the theater, and a lot of veterans didn't hold on to it, so I retrieved a lot of Title X orders. Also Privacy Act, Freedom of Information Act, and also I was the chief trainer for the Knowledge Ops career field. And when I was at the 142nd, I was the Security Forces, and that is the infantry of the Air Force. And my civilian world, I retired from the Multnomah County Sheriff's Department as a deputy.
Thank you for all your service. I know Commissioner West had a comment. Commissioner West?
Thank you for coming today. Thank you for your service. I appreciate a lot of the things that you do for the county, seen and unseen, so thank you. I'm the new liaison to VAC. I'm very excited to be engaging. I'll be very involved in the meetings, and we'll be speaking with you all shortly. And we have really started to ramp up some of the ideas we have to just not honor those that are in the armed services, but to promote that type of public service here, and to be, set a culture and a tone that very much honors and respects and promotes military service in Clackamas County. We've been in communications with, I think it's Major and Councilman Eric Zimmerman, he's a councilman out of the city of Portland, I believe he's a major at Camp Wuthicum, I think I got his rank correct, but we're working about how to do more collaboration and forward-facing work in the community out of Camp Wuthicum, and looking how to incorporate all the branches within the region here in Clackamas County. So one of the ideas that just came up was what they're doing at the National Association of Counties that Commissioner Schrader just spoke to. There's some other things, we've talked about parades, events, highlighting different branches of service, working maybe with recruitment, things like that, where we can be promoting military service. So I look forward to working with you guys. I know my buddy John Baddio is also a part of VAC out of Wilsonville, does a lot of nonprofit work, and there's a lot of great service members and retired members that are a part of VAC, so I'm excited to be engaging with you all.
Thank you. Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, Lori, I just want to just thank you for your work. She's doing a great job of picking the helm up as the Chair of the VAC, so thank you for your work. Lori is extremely knowledgeable, and what I've learned, if anything else, is that there are so many issues that the VAC is dealing with and coping with, that what you're adding to can add to that, but also it'd be great for you to learn all the things that they actively have been doing. So number one, thank you for your service in the Armed Forces, and thank you for your service on the VAC. You know, the last Chair of the VAC that was here was Adam Costrobody, Milwaukee City Councilman, and that was years ago, and he, well, not that long ago, a couple, three years ago. And, you know, a strong advocate for trying to deal with veteran suicide and so forth. I know that's also a big issue for the VACs as well. There are a lot of programs that they are trying to, and a lot of efforts they're trying to, trying to help and be active in. And so past and present, I know we just approved another slate of members to fill the VAC vacancies, so that was a big move. So thank you for helping rebuild. A lot of our committees are rebuilding post-COVID, and so I know it's been challenging to get involvement, but I've been very impressed the last several meetings you've all had, that how many members are there and attending, so thank you.
One caveat, the Air National Guard fills an active-duty mission, the 142nd. They protect the Northwest, and whenever the Russians break our airspace up in Alaska, they are scrambled. And with the Air National Guard, a lot of times the whole unit does not deploy. They deploy in increments, like the 116th was in Afghanistan, and part of the contingent stayed back, you know, to run the mission. But also the 173rd, they are going to have the next new model of fighter jets, and they are a schoolhouse. And so Oregon does have a military presence, but we need to protect it, and it's just not the Army National Guard.
Well, thank you very much for coming today. Thank you.
Would you like some of my business cards?
That would be great, if you could go ahead and, so I want to thank you for your service at Multnomah County as well, and thank you for your military service and coming today, and I think we all look forward to spending more time.
Well, thank you for letting me speak, I appreciate it, but I just wanted to introduce myself.
Thank you again for coming.
And can you leave your cards?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Gary, we'll continue.
I used to, I used to work with the
Thank you.
I have received no other blue cards for anyone who wishes to speak in person today. Chair, this is a final call, if you are attending this meeting in person and wish to comment during general public communication, this is your final opportunity to please fill out a blue card and deposit it in the box by the center doors. Mr. Chair, seeing no one else wishes to speak in person today, with your assent, I'll now move to those attending virtually. If you're attending this meeting virtually and wish to comment during general public communication, this is your opportunity to please raise your hand, and I will call on you in the order that I see. RJ Cook, I'll allow you to speak, you'll have three minutes.
Well, good morning, and first off, I'd also like to thank Sergeant Mayor Lori, and I'm sorry I missed her last name, for her service, and not only in her military service, but the volunteering for the VAC. What a great job. So, good morning, Commissioners, Administrator Schmidt, and staff. Thanks for the opportunity to acknowledge our rural and urban unincorporated volunteers working hard to help. You represent almost half the population of Clackamas County, making it a great place to live. So here are the July volunteers, since we were on recess there, so I missed the opportunity to mention the volunteers for July. So starting off with the Hoodland CPO, they stated their opening was, "You may need to pare this down, because we just couldn't do it," and their first acknowledgement was to Marie Enity. She's just simply too valuable not to mention all her wonderful contributions to the community of Hoodland CPO. Marie volunteered with the Hoodland Emergency Communication Project and has already contributed her time and knowledge to bring the radio training materials to life. She works with the Oregon Trail School District, the previous owner of the Mountain Times, Corridor's Much-Loved Monthly Paper, and continues to write monthly columns, and they feel they are extremely fortunate to have Marie on the board with the community. So Chair Robertson, Commissioner West, these two might be your neighbors from the LAD Neighborhood Association. Eve Stevenson was our co-president for eight years and was instrumental in creating many social activities that have now become annual events, and Paul Welty, who organizes a regular gathering of neighbors to clean the roadway of trash. He uses Clackamas County equipment and follows county safety rules to a T. He usually has 10 to 12 volunteers help keeping the rural roads pristine. So next time you're out and about in the Wilsonville area, keep an eye out for Paul and his wonderful road trash warriors. Stafford Hamlet CPO, and has two duty large for her many years of citizen advocacy in rousting the troops on many local issues and getting the vote out over the years. A real go-getter when it comes to community engagement and involvement. And then the Fiala family, Ann, Doug, Wes, Rich, and their families, the family is one of our heritage families in the Hamlets. They have ties to the Stafford area since 1906. The family farm has become the hub of the Hamlet and CPO, graciously hosting numerous Hamlet events, like the Stafford Hamlet Family Fest, committee meetings, and always very hospitable with their time and farm. Hopefully you will be able to meet and enjoy chatting with the Fialas Saturday at the Hamlet Meet and Greet. Commissioner Savis mentioned yesterday, after 25 years of building complete communities, and here's a volunteer that really kind of jumped out in that area, is Malala's Jim Gilbert. He's a former Chair of the CPO, but Jim has helped make a documentary called "An Oregon Story: Saving Our Beaches, Farmland, and More." It was a documentary he helped work on, and it highlights the citizens that helped pass Senate Bill 100. And I will, it's a wonderful film, and I will include a link that will get you to the video. It's great work by yet another Clackamas County CPO resident. And the Hamlet of CPO, Hamlet and CPO Beaver Creek, Claire Collett, who was serving as a conduit between Oregon City Library and our rural community. And then three gentlemen, Scott Stein, Brad Barley, and John Burke for fundraising and wrecking a beautiful wooden arch over the Connor Park entrance. And so as the summer leads into autumn, we're hoping that our monthly volunteer kudos will be on the rise, as CPOs and Hamlets begin to have more regular scheduled meetings. And as Commissioner Savis mentioned yesterday, this could help give our CPOs and Hamlets a boost. So thank you, and hope to see you all Saturday at the Stafford Meet and Greet. And just as a heads up on that, in order to get to the Fiala Farm, you can come up Stafford Road by Walker's Corner to get to Johnson Road would probably be the easiest exit, because the wonderful work they're currently doing on Stafford Road. Commissioner Schrader, you're going to have to take the long way around.
Yeah, I have to get there through Rosemont somehow. I'll go through West Lynn and come in the back way.
Look forward to seeing you all, and congratulations on the soon-to-be addition to the family there, Commissioner Helm.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
This is a final call, if you're attending this meeting virtually and have not spoken yet, to please raise your hand if you wish to speak, and I will call on you in the order that I see. Mr. Chair, I see no other members of the public today, either in person or virtually attending, who wish to speak.
All right, thank you. With that being said, I'll close the public communication, we'll move on, and Gary, what is next for our agenda today?
Next is a presentation, November 4th, 2025, Special Election Preview. Clackamas County Clerk, Clerk McMullin, will present, along with Elections Manager Justin Larson. Welcome, and go ahead, please.
Good morning, Chair Roberts and Commissioners, it's great to see you. I am Catherine McMullin, I am the County Clerk and Head Election Official for Clackamas County, and I have with me here Justin Larson, our Elections Manager. This is a regular informational presentation that we give in advance of each election that we conduct here in Clackamas County, and looking forward to covering that with you today.
Good morning, Commissioners. Before we jump into the upcoming November special election, I wanted to provide a brief overview of the last election which we conducted, which was the special district election held this May. This May election was a successful election. We had 314,435 eligible voters, with 21.04% turnout. Out of those ballots that were returned, 225 ballots, or 0.3%, were challenged and could not be accepted because of signature issues. The election cost per eligible voter was $1.32, and that, and those election costs include the cost to conduct the election, which include ballot printing, vote-by-mail envelopes, personnel, postage, equipment services, software licensing, voter communication, ballot drop site services, public notices, and voters' pamphlet distribution. The election personnel cost per 1,000 ballots processed was $904. Additionally, I want to note that we were able to implement and use for the first time our new ballot sorter. Thank you. That was a great, great addition to our office, and was able to streamline not only the process, but also be able to provide current and accurate data on a daily basis of ballot returns, and we were able to provide daily notifications through Track Your Ballot to the voters that have signed up for that. That was a wonderful service, and was able to be implemented and streamlined, so thank you.
So moving on to our next election. Our next election is on November 4th. It's a special election, and it's not a countywide election. You might ask what's going to be on the ballot. There's an expired term for the Gladstone City Council, and then there's also seven local measures, and that includes the cities of Gladstone, Happy Valley, and Portland, the Sandy Fire District, and the Lake Oswego, Oregon Trail, and West Lynn-Wilsonville School Districts. Because it's not a countywide election, you won't get a ballot unless you live in one of these districts or cities. So beginning October 8th, we're going to be mailing voters' pamphlets to all residences in the jurisdictions with an election. We are expecting about 126,000 voters to get a ballot this election, and that's just under 40% of our eligible voters here in Clackamas County. October 14th is the voter registration deadline for new Oregon registrations, and then our Oregon City Office is going to be open until 7:00 PM that day, so we can help to ensure that any new voters that need to get registered to vote can do so before the deadline. Like in past elections, we are going to have two voter service locations open during this election. The first is our Clackamas County Elections Office, and then the second is the Community Room at the Happy Valley Library. And so that's the Happy Valley Vote Center that we have open in partnership with the city of Happy Valley. And that'll be open starting October 20th. And then our hours are going to be the same, both at our Oregon City Office, as well as the Happy Valley Vote Center. And again, at those locations, you can get a replacement ballot, get assistance, vote in person, return your ballot, ask a question of an Elections Official. So we'll have 22 official ballot drop sites open for this election. These are the drop sites that are in the jurisdictions where there is a special election. We're going to be moving the Oak Lodge Library Drop Site to the new location at the Oak Lodge Library and Concord Community Center, which will be located at 3783 Southeast Concord Road, and that will have a drive-up drop-off, so left-side drop-off, and so that will allow people to return their ballots quickly, expediently, and that'll be a good service for that community. And it's nice to be moving with the new library and with the new community center. We advise that you, of course, return your official, your drop, your ballot to an official ballot drop site by 8:00 on Election Day, which is November 4th. If you choose to mail your ballot, I advise that you get it in the mail by Friday, October 31st, so that would be Halloween, because we want to make sure that the ballot is received in time to be counted. If you choose to mail your ballot, it has to be postmarked on or before Election Day, and then received within seven days of Election Day for us to be able to count it. I encourage folks to continue to sign up for Track Your Ballot. We have just under 50,000 voters in Clackamas County that have signed up for the service, and with Track Your Ballot, you get a notification when we're mailing ballots, so you know to check your mailbox, and then another notification when we've received your ballot, and then when we have verified your signature, and it's been accepted for counting.
It's the nature of elections, as soon as we begin to wrap up the previous one, that we're beginning preparations on the next one, and we are extra special, because we are preparing already for the upcoming primary election in May 2026. The next couple of slides contain information about filing deadlines, which have changed due to recent legislation. All the information on the next few slides is already on our website for the upcoming May primary election, in case if you want to look into this information further. House Bill 4024 changed the candidate filing deadline for incumbent public office holders who are seeking reelection to the same office. Those deadlines, well, the deadline that truly changed is noted for March 3rd, 2026. It is the last day a candidate, that is, an elected incumbent seeking reelection to the same position, may file a declaration of candidacy or a nominating petition with the County Elections Office. The deadline otherwise is March 10th, for those who are not an elected incumbent seeking reelection to the same position. So if you are an elected incumbent seeking reelection to the same position, your deadline is seven days prior to file your declaration of candidacy or nominating petition. This is a new change dictated in legislation. Additionally, we have several countywide positions that will appear on the ballot. For County Commissioner Position 2, County Commissioner Position 5, and County Assessor, those three positions will appear, will be up for office, or be up for election next year for a four-year term. These positions will appear on the May primary election ballot. If a candidate receives a simple majority of the vote, then the candidate is elected in the May primary election. If a candidate does not receive a simple majority of the vote, then the top two candidates are nominated and will appear on the November general election ballot. County Commissioner Position 4 will appear on the ballot for a two-year, unexpired term. If less than three candidates file for the position, the candidates will not appear on the May primary election ballot, rather they will appear on the November general election ballot. If three or more candidates file for this position, the candidates will appear on the May primary election ballot. If a candidate receives a simple majority of the vote, then only that candidate will be nominated and will appear on the November general election ballot. If no candidate receives a simple majority of the vote, then the top two candidates are nominated, and both will appear on the November general election ballot. This position will be elected in the November general election. Additionally, we have the County Clerk and County Treasurer, countywide positions. These will appear on the ballot for a four-year term. If less than three candidates file for the position, the candidates will not appear on the May primary election ballot, rather they will appear on the November general election ballot. If three or more candidates file for the position, the candidates will appear on the May primary election ballot. If a candidate receives a simple majority of the vote, then only that candidate will be nominated and will appear on the general election November ballot. If no candidate receives a simple majority of the vote, then the top two candidates are nominated, and both will appear on the November general election ballot. This position will be elected in the November general election. Again, all this information, we do have broken out by position on the May primary election website, including the information about the filing deadline changes.
Thank you, Justin. So when I talk about equity and inclusion in my office, I like to define what it is. And for us in our office, every eligible voter has the resources they need to vote easily and without barriers. And some of the ways that we do that is continuing to have extended office hours for the voter registration deadline, and then we're also open the Saturday before Election Day at both the Happy Valley Vote Center and our Oregon City Office. both the Happy Valley Vote Center and our Oregon City Office. And then we also provide assistance to voters with disabilities for voter registration, for receiving or returning a ballot, and for voting. And then when we talk about election integrity, that is defined in my office as all of our elections are safe and secure, accurate, and transparent. Our ballot processing area remodel has increased the transparency of signature verification processes, and it accommodates a larger, more powerful mail ballot sorter technology that lets us move through that part of the process more quickly and more accurately. We also host candidate open houses, and we cover common elections administration questions with targeted events for candidates, for the political parties, city recording staff, and other partners. And then in addition, we do voter registration maintenance as a continuous task, and that's done at the county level by four elections staff. So we encourage you and for everyone in Clackamas County to get ready, get set, and to vote, and that is for every election, and particularly, particularly our local elections. Please sign up for Track Your Ballot. You can do so at that link there on the screen. Make sure that you're registered to vote, that you update your information or choose your political party. You can do that at oregonvotes.gov, and it's always good practice to check your voter registration once a year or before each election, just to make sure you didn't forget to update it when you moved. And then visit our office, and please be an elections observer. We are open to the public. You can watch the process from when ballots come in, till they're verified, opened, scanned, and tallied, and it's really interesting to watch, and we do have tours and folks come in on a regular basis. Thank you for this time to provide an update for this year and into next, and we're available for any questions that you might have.
Right. Commissioner Savas has a question.
Yeah, well, first of all, thank you for the presentation, and being that we've got volunteers on my mind, I want to thank all the election volunteers that show up and help you, your staff, run the elections. So thank you to you and your staff and the volunteers. Going back to that HB 4024, we've been, some of us have been discussing it as to not really understanding. I didn't follow or research. Could you just give us any insights you have as to rationale for this change? I mean, I always file early, you know, I'll file September again here shortly, but I don't know of that many people, incumbents, that file really late. Do you have any rationale for that change?
You know, I'm not a legislature, part of the legislature, so I don't make the laws, but I do make sure that we follow them, and so I would definitely reach out to the state legislature to find out exactly why they may have put this in place. But our goal is to follow that new law until it's changed or adjusted, if that's what they decide that they want to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I also want to echo what Commissioner Savas has said. Thank you for your hard work. It's building trust and making sure that there's transparency, and I know the board, before I got here, made the decision to fund this new machine that you guys have, that you talked about, and so we're really glad to see that's working well, and that was a big accomplishment for your office, so thank you. So, with that being said, if there's, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner West, go ahead.
Are you guys, the last time we took a tour, you were under construction, and there were tarps and things going on. Are you guys, are you, is that project fully complete now? That full construction?
I expect to be fully complete next week, end of next week. We have a few items, like baseboard and paint and some carpet finishing.
Okay, just finishing things up, okay. And part of that was, am I right, the public viewing area? You spoke to, like, increase transparency. I know that we didn't, could you cover that a little bit more about what has happened to accommodate that?
Yeah, so we have video screens that mirror the signature verification. So we have 10 signature verification workstations, and then in the observer area, you can see the election workers actually verifying signatures, and that way, you know, you're actually seeing it happen, signature by signature.
Additionally, we do have a dedicated television monitor in the observation area that shows security camera footage of any areas that may be potentially behind a blind spot, or they're not as close to the observation area to increase maximum transparency throughout the entire facility in which we're processing ballots.
Yeah, thank you for that update. My other question is, is when you go to Track Your Ballot, which I'll double-check to make sure I am doing that, I think I am, I encourage others to do it, let's say you do have a challenged ballot, and I know a lot of people don't quite know what that is, and that's when a ballot is set aside because this, often the signature doesn't match the one on file, and they need to verify who you are to make sure that that is an accurate ballot. Is that a good, like, it's an accurate voting ballot, right?
Yeah, if your signature does not match, or you forgot to sign.
So Track My Ballot, say, hey, Ben, your signature is, there's an issue with it. If you want your ballot to be counted, you know, this is what you do. Does that, do they get that update on Track Your Ballot?
The update that they get is, there's a problem with your ballot, please contact our office, and then they'll call or contact us, and we can tell them exactly if they forgot to sign, signature didn't match, or something else out of the ordinary, and that way we can cure that ballot and count that vote, you know, in addition, and quicker than whenever they get that mailed letter that we do also send.
Okay.
Additionally, they'll also receive a follow-up notification through Track Your Ballot once their ballot has been accepted, so that way they have that confirmation.
Follow-up, okay. And then my last question is, is we have the filing deadlines. I don't know why it's a week less for a Commissioner's Office than I, but I know the legislature made its decision for whatever reason, but to file, you can file as early as?
Yeah, so open September 11th at 8:30 when we open, so that's next week as well.
Okay, and that's all I'm gonna, thank you for the update and really interesting stuff, and thanks for getting the transparency increased and the construction and advocating for the machine and having better election processes. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Commissioner West. Commissioner Helm?
Yeah, thank you, Catherine. Thank you for the presentation. This is, it's, I'm learning a lot. This is fascinating, especially about my position. I was like, where, is an elected, an appointed person, an incumbent, or is it, I, but I know what Position 4 is all about now, so thank you for that. My question is, the status of mail-in voting, there's a lot of chatter about that being eliminated entirely. Are you hearing anything from the federal level about that happening in Oregon?
Yeah, so as an elections administrator, we follow all state and federal laws, and so there haven't, has not been any state or federal law changes that would change how vote-by-mail is done in Oregon.
Okay, nothing new. Okay, so far.
All right. Well, thank you again. Seeing no other questions, we'll go ahead and move on, and thank you again. Gary, what's next?
Thank you. Next is a public hearing. Approval of Proposal 2025-004, annexation to the Tri-City Service District of 19717 South Leland Road in Oregon City for sewer and stormwater service to a single-family home. No county general funds are involved. Jeff Muns, Assistant County Counsel, will present. Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you. Chair, Commissioners, we have another annexation petition to our Tri-City Service District, which is one of the component parts of water environmental services here in Clackamas County. So it's a single-family residence, has a septic system currently, and they are seeking to replace that with a connection to the service district to receive their sewer services. Like I say, it's, you said it's a single-family residence, it's a 19717 South Leland Road in Oregon City. The property owner is also concurrently seeking annexation to the city of Oregon City, but this matter is moving forward first. Current assessed value is 193,924. It's within the metro jurisdictional boundary, so their standards also apply to this annexation. The district has a sewer line in Leland Road to serve the property and is able to do so. In reviewing this proposal, it complies with Section 7 of our comprehensive plan, as well as is compliant with the metro requirements for development of these types of services in unincorporated Clackamas County as well. So the application, this petition is consistent with our comp plan, metro rules, as well as state law. No cost to the county for this boundary change, and the staff recommends approval.
Great, thank you. Questions, Commissioners?
Chair, make a motion.
All right, go ahead. Is a public hearing first, please.
Oh, yes. We're ready.
All right, so Gary's correct. I need to open it for a public hearing on this item, so I'm going to turn to the clerk and have him moderate the in-person virtual for us.
Thank you, Chair. I've received no blue cards to speak on this specific matter. If you are attending this meeting in person today and wish to comment during this specific public hearing only, this is your final opportunity. Please fill out a blue card and deposit in the box found by the center doors. Chair, seeing no one who wishes to comment in person in this specific public hearing, with your consent, I'll now move to those attending virtually. If you are attending this meeting virtually and like to comment on this specific public hearing only, this is your opportunity to please raise your hand, and I will call on you in the order that I see. This is a final call for those attending virtually who wish to comment on this specific public hearing. Please raise your hand. Mr. Chair, I see no one else today attending either virtually or in person who wish to comment on this specific public hearing.
All right, thank you, Andrew. I'll close the public hearing. We'll move on. Commissioners, any other remaining questions or comments? Seeing none, Commissioner West, I'm now ready for a motion.
I will now give you the motion. Chair, I move that we approve Proposal 2025-004.
Second.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner West has moved to approve the Proposal 2025-004. Commissioner Schrader has seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, would you please call the poll?
Commissioner Helm?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mr. Chair?
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 0, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Andrew. Gary, what is next for us?
Next is the Consent Agenda. Andrew, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Board of County Commissioners Consent Agenda. Item A: Elected Officials. One: Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Two: Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon State Marine Board for Recreational Boating Enforcement on County Water Bodies. Agreement value is $626,908 for two years. Funding is through the Oregon State Marine Board. No county general funds are involved. B: County Administration. One: Approval of a Personal Services Contract with WTP America for Consulting Services During the Operations and Maintenance Phase of the New Courthouse. Contract value is $168,630 for five months. Funding is through budgeted county general funds. C: Finance. One: Approval of an Amendment to a Contractor Agreement with Z-Link for Building Management Software. Amendment value is $638,273.84 for five years. Total agreement value is $1,226,471.20 for 10 years. Funding is through departmental cost allocation, which may include a small portion of budgeted county general funds. D: Technology Services. One: Approval of a Board Order to Authorize a Purchase Order to CDWG for Network Hardware Licensing and Support. Contract value is $226,474.54 for three years. Funding is through departmental cost allocation, which may include a small portion of budgeted county general funds. E: Disaster Management. One: Approval of a Grant Application to the Federal Emergency Management Agency for Limited Reimbursement of Local Emergency Management Programs. Grant value is $151,140.40 for one year. Total application value is $302,280.80 for one year. Funding is through the Federal Emergency Management Agency and required match of $151,140.40 in budgeted county general funds. Two: Approval of a Grant Agreement Amendment with the City of Portland for Reduced Urban Area Security Initiative Funding. Amendment value is a decrease of $68,000. Total agreement value is decreased to $353,832. Funding is returned to the City of Portland. No county general funds are involved. F: Juvenile. One: Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with Clackamas Educational Services District for an Education Workforce Coordinator Staff Position. Agreement value is $43,000 for one year. Funding is through the Clackamas Educational Services District and the Oregon Youth Authority. No county general funds are involved. G: Transportation Development. One: Approval of Sale Documents for Five Properties Sold at the July 8, 2025 Surplus Property Auction. Funding is through auction bidders. Total sale value is $108,291. No county general funds are involved. Two: Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Canby to Transfer A Portion of North Pine Street. Agreement value is $513,000. Funding is through the Community Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Three: Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Canby to Transfer Storm Drainage Maintenance on Portions of Southeast First Avenue, Southeast 13th Avenue, and Millennial Road. No fiscal impact. No county general funds are involved. H: Health Housing and Human Services. One: Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for Driving Under the Influence of Intoxicants Education and Treatment Services. Agreement value is $7,616 for two years. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Two: Approval of an Amendment to an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon Department of Human Services for Funding of Job Placement and Retention Services. Amendment value is $105,000 for 21 months. Total agreement value is $605,000 for three years and nine months. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Human Services. No county general funds are involved. Three: Approval of an Amendment to a Revenue Agreement with Care Oregon for Participation in the Primary Care Payment Model Program. Amendment value is $600,000 for six months. Total agreement value is $2,550,000 for 18 months. Funding is through Care Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Four: Approval of a Personal Services Contract with Transcending Hope for Spanish-speaking Peer Support Services to Residents of Behavioral Health Stabilization Houses. Contract value is $179,539 for 18 months. Funding is through the Oregon Health Plan. No county general funds are involved. Five: Approval of a Personal Services Contract with Folk Time for On-Site Peer-Delivered Support Services at the Peer Connection Center. Contract value is $187,141.31 for 18 months. Funding is through the Oregon Health Plan. No county general funds are involved. Six: Approval of a Subrecipient Agreement with Oregon City Together for Youth Substance Use Prevention School Programming. Amendment value is $179,636 for two years. Funding is through budgeted county general funds. Seven: Approval of an Amendment to a Personal Services Contract with Ant Farm to Provide Shelter, Outreach, and Engagement Services in Rural Clackamas County. Amendment value is $1,106,581.28 for one year. Total contract value is $3,141,044.12 for three years. Funding is through the Governor's State of Emergency Due to Homelessness State Funding and $266,215.80 in budgeted county general funds. Eight: Approval of a Personal Services Contract with the Father's Heart Street Ministry for a Homeless Medical Respite Housing Pilot Program. Contract value is $283,533 for two years. Funding is through Supportive Housing Services Measure Funds. No county general funds are involved. Nine: Approval of an Amendment to an Intergovernmental Grant Agreement with the Oregon Department of Health and Human Services for Medicare Consumer Education. Amendment value is $13,536 for one year. Total agreement value is $51,536 for three years. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Health and Human Services. No county general funds are involved. Ten: Approval of an Amendment to a Subrecipient Agreement with Foothills Community Church for Meal Delivery and Transportation Services to Older Adults through the Millala Adult Community Center. Amendment value is $154,966 for one year. Total agreement value is $537,593 for three years. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Human Services and statewide transportation improvement funds. No county general funds are involved. Eleven: Approval of an Amendment to a Subrecipient Agreement with the City of Gladstone for Meal Delivery and Transportation Services to Older Adults through the Gladstone Community Center. Amendment value is $79,523 for one year. Total agreement value is $243,623 for two years. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Human Services and statewide transportation improvement funds. No county general funds are involved. Twelve: Approval of an Amendment to a Subrecipient Agreement with Hoodland Senior Center for Meal Delivery and Transportation Services to Older Adults in the Welch's Area. Amendment value is $133,919 for one year. Total agreement value is $394,500 for three years. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Human Services and statewide transportation improvement funds. No county general funds are involved. Thirteen: Approval of an Amendment to a Subrecipient Agreement with the City of Sandy for Meal Delivery and Transportation Services to Older Adults through the Sandy Senior and Community Center. Amendment value is $108,323 for one year. Total agreement value is $348,87 for three years. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Human Services and statewide transportation improvement funds. No county general funds are involved. Fourteen: Approval of an Amendment to a Subrecipient Agreement with Friends of Canby Adult Center for Meal Delivery and Transportation Services to Older Adults. Amendment value is $263,790 for one year. Total agreement value is $954,235 for three years. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Human Services and statewide transportation improvement funds. No county general funds are involved. Fifteen: Approval of an Amendment to a Subrecipient Agreement with Trimet for Expanded Plans and Additional Statewide Transportation Improvement Funds. Amendment value is $5,254,811 for 22 months. Total agreement value is $11,120,380 for four years. Funding is through statewide transportation improvement funds. No county general funds are involved. Mr. Chair, that concludes the Consent Agenda. Mr. Chair, that concludes the consent agenda.
Amazing always, Andrew. Amazing. I wanted you to say recipient four times fast because sub-recipient, you were just you're doing amazing job, so thank you. Colleagues, do you wish to remove any item from the consent agenda?
I was gonna ask him to repeat everything, but he did so well, I'll just, thanks, Andrew, for great work there.
All right. With that being said, I may have a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. Commissioner Helm has moved to approve the consent agenda. Commissioner Savis has seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, would you please call the poll?
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Helm.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners, convene as the Water Environmental Services Board of Directors, and I will turn to Gary. What's next?
Thank you, Chair. Next is the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda. Andrew, would you please read the consent agenda?
Water Environment Services Consent Agenda. Item A: Approval of an ingress and egress Eastman Agreement with Craig and Cindy Brooks for access to a future accessory dwelling unit site in Welch's area. No fiscal impact. No county general funds are involved. B, approval of a personal services contract with Brown and Caldwell for on-call engineering services. Contract value is $1 million for five years. Funding is through Water Environment Services Construction Fund and Operating Fund. No county general funds are involved. C, approval of a personal services contract with David Evans and Associates for on-call engineering services. Contract value is $2 million for five years. Funding is through Water Environment Services Construction Fund and Operating Fund. No county general funds are involved. D, approval of a personal services contract with Hazen and Sariar for on-call engineering services. Contract value is $2 million for five years. Funding is through Water Environment Services Construction Fund and Operating Fund. No county general funds are involved. E, approval of a personal services contract with AKS Engineering and Forestry for on-call engineering services. Contract value is $1 million for five years. Funding is through Water Environment Services Construction Fund and Operating Fund. No county general funds are involved. F, approval of a personal services contract with Carlo Engineering for on-call engineering services. Contract value is $1 million for five years. Funding is through Water Environment Services Construction Fund and Operating Fund. No county general funds are involved. G, approval of a personal services contract with Century West Engineering Corporation for on-call engineering services. Contract value is $1 million for five years. Funding is through Water Environment Services Construction Fund and Operating Fund. No county general funds are involved. H, approval of a personal services contract with Conso North America for on-call engineering services. Contract value is $1 million for five years. Funding is through Water Environment Services Construction Fund and Operating Fund. No county general funds are involved. I, approval of a personal services contract with Herrera Environmental Consultants for on-call engineering services. Contract value is $1 million for five years. Funding is through Water Environment Services Construction Fund and Operating Fund. No county general funds are involved. J, approval of a personal services contract with OTAC for on-call engineering services. Contract value is $1 million for five years. Funding is through Water Environment Services Construction Fund and Operating Fund. No county general funds are involved. K, approval of a personal services contract with Parametrics for on-call engineering services. Contract value is $2 million for five years. Funding is through Water Environment Services Construction Fund and Operating Fund. No county general funds are involved. L, approval of a personal services contract with RSNH for on-call engineering services. Contract value is $1 million for five years. Funding is through Water Environment Services Construction Fund and Operating Fund. No county general funds are involved. M, approval of a personal services contract with Water Systems Consulting for on-call engineering services. Contract value is $1 million for five years. Funding is through Water Environment Services Construction Fund and Operating Fund. No county general funds are involved. Mr. Chair, that concludes the Water Environment Services Board of Directors Consent Agenda.
All right, thank you. Do my fellow directors wish to remove any item from the consent agenda?
Chair, I don't wish to remove anything, I just wanna make a comment that I'm just curious and I'll follow up afterwards, I'll approve this today, but there's, I think we just about tapped every engineering firm in the region, I think. There's $15 million of personal service. I don't recall doing that many different companies, so I, I, I'm gonna look into the, into the what and whys of that, but I'll approve it for today, but I, I certainly wanna know if there's any obligation. That's $15 million altogether, if I did my math right, but just wanna better understand why so many different contracts.
I had the same concern, Commissioner, and we have an answer for you. Andrew, go ahead, please.
Yes, Commissioner Savis. Staff from Water Environment Services shares that these contracts for on-call engineering services is to provide flexibility to more efficiently deliver on the capital plan as it removes the need to individually conduct separate procurement processes for each project. West says that having a larger number of firms on contract maximizes competition while retaining efficiencies for completing the procurement processes upfront. During this process for procurement, West received 44 proposals covering the four categories. 11 firms were selected, the 11 you just heard, and two were selected for multiple categories, which is why some items were for $2 million instead of $1 million. We want to have a deep bench of qualified firms so that they can quickly use them for small projects that come up over the next five years.
So the other question maybe you have the answer to is that, are we obligated to the 15 million in total, or is that just on-call if needed? And is there any obligation if they're not used at all?
Correct. It is not obligated, it's on-call if needed.
Okay, thank you.
Great. All right. May I have a motion?
I move we approve the West consent agenda.
I second that.
All right. Director Schrader has moved to approve the West consent agenda. Director Helm has seconded. Any further discussion?
I just would like to make a comment. Having been involved with West for six years on their advisory committee, I will say, if there's one thing you do wanna have on-call during a, an emergency, it's the engineers for this type of work. During some of our biggest crises, be it fire, ice storms, all this, they don't have time to line up people, so having these people in the wings is highly important. So I, I appreciate your explanation, Andrew, because there's, there's just things that, these are things that can't be predicted, and you see them happening all over the place, so.
Great. Great comment. And I think we're ready. Clerk, would you please call the poll for us?
Director West.
Aye.
Director Helm.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director Savis.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero, Mr. Chair.
Right. I will now adjourn as the Water Environment Services Board of Directors and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners, and I will turn to Gary again.
Thank you, Chair. Next is County Administrator Update. That's me. I like to recognize our employees and our programs here at the county today. First, want to recognize our County Medical Examiner's Office, which is within our disaster management department. Investigator Christopher Wright recently assisted an out-of-town relative who had a deceased member of our community, and this relative wrote a note about Christopher's service, and here's what the person wrote. "I would like to take a moment to recognize one of your investigators, Christopher Wright. I had multiple interactions with him due to a death in my family. Christopher went above and beyond in assisting me with information, photographs of my family member's apartment, and various information. This was a very unpleasant trip, but Christopher's assistance was the one interaction that was pleasant and helpful and very much appreciated. Thank you, Christopher, for your time, compassion, invaluable assistance, and words of advice." Thank you, Christopher, and our medical examiner's team, who helps people on the worst day of their life. And Christopher and his, and the team there do very, very effective work. Next, our Transportation and Development Department staff in the onsite sewage and wastewater program is also recognized. Permit technician Christie Bruick was recognized by a member of the public, who wrote, "I came in today and wanted to thank Christie for your help. For those of us not familiar with the permitting process, this can be very difficult and frustrating. After our house fire this past week, I was not sure I was ready to deal with all of this. However, everyone in the office today was very helpful and kind. I left feeling especially aided and supported. I wanted to write this note to say thank you. We look forward to building our new home, now more than ever, as we look for a rental to live in temporarily. Thank you, Christie, and please let others in the office know I thank them too for their support today." So again, someone who is having a really tough time in their life, and our staff was there to help support them and get them the information they need. And that's what I think all of our employees do at Clackamas County, to serve the public every day in their time of need. Thank you, Commissioners, that is my update for today.
All right, thank you. Now's the time for Commissioner Communication, and I'm going to turn to my right to Commissioner Schrader.
Well, thank you so much, colleagues. Wanted to do a quick report on the Oregon State University Clackamas Community College. Meetings that we've been having in order to help co-locate Extension at Clackamas Community College, I think they've been going reasonably well. I think that it is, is going to come to fruition. The MOU was signed, and now at this point in stage of this, of the, of this, I think, a really good opportunity, folks are going through the design phase, so Extension is taking a look at what their needs are, the college is looking at what their needs are, then they're gonna go back together and, you know, try to negotiate and come up with what a shared facility looks like, and get that design done, and hopefully move on forward with the building. We're, we'll have OSU Extension front and center at the community college with signage and parking and everything else that folks need. And I particularly like the idea because I see it as an opportunity for folks to take advantage of, you know, a two-year college opportunity. At Clackamas, I have more of a pipeline that will move young people or, or older adults that are going back to school into a four-year institution with OSU. For me, that's, I think is gonna be one of the long-term benefits, is to have that kind of a collaboration pulled together, and I wanna thank the Provost and Vice Provost of OSU for moving ahead with this with, and also want to give a shout out to Nancy Bush, who has been a fantastic, is always a fantastic manager of all projects, and this one is frankly no exception to that. I will be touring the Oak Lodge Library this afternoon, I'm really looking forward to that, I haven't had a chance to see it yet, but, you know, one of my, one of my philosophies is you never go wrong when you build a library, because libraries are the best institution, I think, in our country, because it allows everyone to have free access to important information, whether it be books or other media. And I've always said, and I've said, and I'll say it again, libraries are the foundation of our republic and our democracy. And other than that, I'm planning to go to the Stafford Meet and Greet on Saturday, and on Sunday, I'm just letting people know, it's the Down the River Cleanup. Usually I do go down the river, I'm not doing it this year, but I'm gonna be meeting a group of volunteers at Barton Park. They invited me to come and be with them and speak to them at 2 o'clock, and there you go. Oh, and, and, okay, Chair Roberts, don't wanna put you on the spot, but you've been invited to the Oregon Trail Democrats are having their picnic that day. They did contact me, and they said they'd love to have you be there. I'm gonna try and make both, going to a picnic and then going to see the folks at Down the River. So I have a busy Saturday ahead of me. Okay, that's all I've got.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Schrader, you mentioning the Oak Lodge Library tour today, we're gonna cut the ribbon on that, I believe, in October. And what came to mind in a conversation I had with Chair Roberts yesterday was, you know, some of these projects would not have happened if they were not eligible for ARPA dollars, and we also had a timeline in order to spend those ARPA dollars, so it's either use it or lose it. And so, you know, it's unfortunate that something like that, like a pandemic, would end up creating a program like ARPA, but indeed, these projects would not have happened otherwise, and, and so, as it relates to the Parks District aspect of that, you know, they also received ARPA dollars because they were eligible for ARPA dollars, and we were able to get not everything we ever wanted to do to the community center or the old school, but some of it, what we could do, we budgeted as best we could there, and the district has been facing a historical under, or a lack, a, a lack of adequate funding to do a lot of the programs. It's one of the lowest tax bases of, of Parks Districts in the state, but in anticipation maybe of a solution in the future with the district and some of the poor agreements historically that precede all of us here in this room, but there's some bad agreements that we're trying to resolve. We accomplished the resolving the issue with Wichita Center in agreement that, that, that property be turned over to us, ultimately it was not, and, but we end up in a better place, and want to thank Commissioner West for helping negotiate a good solution for all parties on that, and so we were successful. Gary took a role in that, appreciate you as well. And we also use ARPA dollars to help solve that, that challenge as well. So those ARPA dollars were, I think we got, what, $81 million altogether, I believe is the number, and we could put that to good use, this is just one of those examples, or a couple of those examples. A few weeks ago, two or three weeks ago, I attended the Jennings Lodge Annual Picnic, and it was held at the Jennings Lodge School. I believe Commissioner, Chair Roberts attended school there, if I recall right? And, so. So it was a, it was a great, it was a great day, and so what, one of the events they have there towards the end is an open session talking about what's on people's minds, and I heard it today here, and I've heard it before, and I've also talked to other members of CPOs about this and other community members, but a lot of people complain, and I heard this, why are, why are roads not really cleaned up, right? Why we have weeds or garbage or trash, right, along our roadways? How come, whose job is that? You know, if it's in a city, I guess it's the city responsibility, unless it's a state highway, but state highway, it's that. But we have a, like, a lot of owner road programs where people or a family or neighbors will take, take responsibility and they'll clean up the garbage. So first of all, big shout out to all those people who do that. You know, you see them out there picking up the garbage and keeping our streets clean. You know, I, I really appreciate that, and I sometimes, it's almost sometimes embarrassing to go down certain roads and see the weeds that are really high, and, you know, I, I wanna get my weed whacker out and start walking, and I don't know necessarily if that's really totally legal to, to do that, but I just wondered if, if, if there's a possibility that we could either find out what the allowances are for that? Can we actually be on a state sidewalk, let's say McLaughlin Boulevard, and, and maintain that? Is that, is that legit? So small things like that, but I just wondered if that's a program that, you know, we, we need volunteers for, but it was brought up at this Jennings Lodge CPO, not CPO, but this picnic here a while back by a young lady, and I, again, I've heard this many times, but it's something we ought to pursue, and I just wanna just say that, you know, what I shared with Chair Roberts yesterday, what really drives me and drives me in this position is solving problems, and I guess there's a lot of job security because there's a lot of problems out there to solve. But Chair, I yield back and I wish everyone a great weekend.
Thank you. Commissioner West?
Thank you, Chair. I wanna speak to some activity in the legislature over Labor Day weekend. While working families were out trying to enjoy time with their families on Labor Day and have some time away from the workplace, the legislature was working hard on how to pass the largest transportation tax in Oregon's history to take more money from working families. Just a couple highlights from this piece of legislation that I think Clackamas County residents should know about. Currently, you pay about 40 cents a gallon in gas tax. Every single time you fill up, every gallon that goes in your tank gets 40 cents of that. It goes to ODOT. More than 55% of that gas tax doesn't actually make it to roads or maintenance, it goes to paid debt service. They want to increase that gas tax, they're going to increase it by another six cents. We already have a pretty high cost of fuel here in Oregon. It's gonna go up. That directly impacts the checkbooks of working families. You may have heard this, this was a big issue that came out during the long session. ODOT mysteriously, I don't know if their calculators didn't work, I don't know who is doing the accounting and forecasting, but they seem to mysteriously lost $1.1 billion of taxpayer money. Nobody lost their job, nobody was held accountable, and we're just told nothing to see here, please give us more money from working families. You're gonna see a significant increase on your title fees, registration fees, and a new fee for EVs to have the pleasure of driving an electric vehicle in this state. Another thing that for me was very much a poison pill in this legislation... Another thing that for me was very much a poison pill in this legislation is that right now, to increase your gas tax, the state legislature, by at least a two-thirds majority, has to approve an increase in those taxes. The vote, the elected representatives have to weigh in to increase your gas tax. Well, that's a barrier for tax-hungry politicians, so they remove that. Now the unelected bureaucrats, the ones who lost $1.1 billion of tax money, are going to have the ability to increase your taxes without ever having to go to the legislature to do so. And so it just, once again, transfers wealth and power to unelected bureaucrats with high six-figure incomes that sit there from their ivory towers until working-class people that they have to pay more. For me, that's unacceptable. There are some good things for counties in here. There were some concessions that we will appreciate, but at what cost? The testimony was like 90, people showed up to testify in, in the legislature. It was, it was just heard before the House of Representatives. It's on its way to the Senate, so there's more opportunity to speak to it. 96% of individuals who came to testify opposed it. If you look at the stack of testimonies and opposition and those in support, it was glaring because working families can't pay more in Oregon and continue to get nothing or less. Ask yourself, in this state, what are you getting for your hard-earned dollars? Your labor is your life in many ways, because you have to spend so much time and energy away from your family and your loved ones to pay these taxes so that you can get what in return. And so I think it's time for Oregonians to step up and let their voices be heard. I don't think that this is legislation that working families in Clackamas County would support. I appreciate some of the give-me's to local governments, but at a certain point, at what expense? I'm standing in opposition. So it barely passed out of the House. The Democrats in Oregon have a supermajority. They only needed 36 votes, every single Democrat. If every Democrat would have voted for this legislation, it would have sailed right through. Representative Anessa Hartman out of House District 40 here in Clackamas County is fed up with the lack of accountability, transparency. She's really fed up with the, with the mismanagement of money, and she stood against her own party in principle, and she voted no. However, Representative Javadi out of Telemack County broke away from his party and voted yes. So the, the measure did pass out of the House. It's going to go before the Senate. It's on hold right now as they're trying to figure out who's going to make it to Salem for the special session with the Senate, but please, please testify. If you're a small business owner, if you have to work to, you know, make ends meet and figure out how to put groceries on the table, or even how to fill that gas tank, please testify. If you're somebody that realizes that we need to have better government transparency and better government accountability, please testify and let your voices be heard. It's not a done deal yet, and I will say this publicly, if this does pass and is signed by the governor, I will work my tail off to get the petition initiative on the ballot so Oregonis will finally get a voice to say enough is absolutely enough. With that, we've talked about back-to-school a little bit earlier this week. We, we had some issues around a measles outbreak in our community, very dangerous pathogen and disease that's preventable. There are other things that are preventable, and so this is also the time here when a lot of children are getting their immunizations. We have great resources on the county website around childhood immunizations and resources and information. Please look into that. I encourage parents and their providers to work collaboratively to decide what is best for their families and for their children, but we have information on where you can get immunized, what is appropriate for an individual or a child, depending on their age and their situation. We have a number of different health centers throughout the county that can help you with that in rural and more urban parts of the county. We have school-based health centers, and then there are some culturally specific resources for different communities, too. When you work with our Public Health Department and with your provider that is confidential, and we really want to promote good public health policy, childhood immunizations in unison and collaboration with families and their children in a way that's productive while also respecting patient autonomy and answering any questions that need to be answered. So just want to push that out there, that that resource is available on our website. I just think it's an important plug. We have had a couple incidences in our county around measles outbreaks. It's incredibly virulent, and we want to prevent those things, especially to our more vulnerable populations. And so with that, Chair, I will yield back.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Helm?
I think I need to take a deep breath, and you need to take a deep breath. Well, I'll just be really boring. I'm also going to the Oak Lodge Library Tour today. The, and we just gave updates yesterday. I'll be attending the groundbreaking for the Caring Place on Monday. I think we'll all be there. This is a new facility that is being built in downtown Oregon City to house both the Father's Heart and loved one to service providers for the homeless, as well as many other services they're bringing into that building that will provide wraparound services for those most vulnerable in our community. Other than that, I, I do have a comment about the $1 billion that was lost that we found out about during the C4 Retreat, and maybe Commissioner Savis can help me with the words on this. Those, if I'm to understand this correctly, were not funds we already had. They were funds that were programmed for that never arrived. So it was, that was the way it was explained by Mr. Gamba, and I apologize for not knowing the exact words, but it was money that was never, it was, it was put in the budget, it was never, it was...
It was an error in forecasting.
It was an error in forecasting, exactly. It wasn't like $1 million, $1 billion went out of a checking account and disappeared.
That is correct.
So I just want to clarify that.
Massively impacts planning.
Massively.
Massively.
And I don't disagree with any of that, but the, the perception is that it was money that was lost or disappeared. It was improperly forecasted, so just a clarification on that, so.
And I'll just add that when that broke several months ago, KGW and other news channels covered it pretty intensively.
They did.
Anything else?
That's it. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Just a couple quick comments. First of all, this next week on 9/11, we're going to have a presentation on suicide prevention and Suicide Prevention Weeks, 8 through the 14th, and it's just encourage folks to come back and listen to that presentation. There's a lot of resources out there, Alliance for Life, Safe Oregon, Veterans Hotline, and really want to let people know there's a lot of resources out there to help you get through some difficult times, so I wanted, or encourage you to come back on that. And now, it's interesting, Commissioner West was following up on measles, and I'm following up on safe driving around schools since school started, so it's interesting how we have different lines that we're focusing on. So my friendly reminder really is, boy, there are a lot of kids around our schools right now, and so it's just some back-to-school basics. Slow down in the school zones. Watch kids. Always stop for school buses. Just a reminder, you need to stop in both directions when school bus lights are running. And then another great big one is distracted driving. And please, put your phone down. Watch out for pedestrians. Kids don't always look when they cross the street. And the last one, I'll, I'll fall on my sword on this. I'll never forget it, and I've been good ever since. I was actually a deputy at the time, and the crosswalk said, "Don't cross," and I crossed. And Ron Neso, who's the superintendent, said, "You're setting a bad example." And I said, "You're right, I am," and that our kids do look at us. So just the friendly reminder is to be a role model for kids, and when it says, "Don't walk," it's a simple thing, don't do it. So with that being said, I don't think we have anything else. We'll go ahead and conclude today's meeting, and I want to thank you for joining us. Have a great rest of your day.